The August 12th regular business meeting of Waynesboro City Council. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening, and I would like to ask Mr. Short if he would please lead us in the pledge.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Short. For those in attendance this evening, if you wish to speak during the citizens' comment period, please sign up on the sheet in the back of chambers. Item two is the adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and that agenda is adopted four to zero. We're going to move on past items from the mayor. I don't have anything this evening, and I'm going to go right on to item number four, which is matters from council. Does anybody have anything they would like to talk about this evening? No?
Well, I guess just a couple of things, just note of appreciation to our Parks Department and all the volunteers that came out for the kids' mud run fun, whatever the name was. It was really, really cool, and just to see all the families and kids. I did a post-race analysis and conversations with a lot of littles, and running through the river was hands down their favorite. So it was a pretty cool experience. And then also too, to the United Way and all the volunteers, community folks that came out to support the Stuff the Bus event. It was truly successful, and I'm so grateful that my slot ended about an hour and 15 minutes before the big rainstorm came through. So my regards to those that had a deal through that, but just thank them for their support and contributions to support our kids.
And so they couldn't talk you into wearing the crown box?
No, 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 no. That was all Jeff, so.
All Jeff. Maybe he'll let you borrow it next week.
Yeah, right.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I was about to forget, actually. We had a workshop last week where the city staff briefed everyone on the status of the city right now, that as far as our credit rating has increased, our unemployment has been cut in half, our growth rate is up. There was a lot of good news from them, but it took a lot of hard work from the city staff. And I just want to know how much we, I, and I think I speak for us, we appreciate all the work and effort they put into that report.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
Except for Mike. He's not here.
Item five is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and consent agenda is adopted four to zero. Item six is appointing viewers to consider an application by David McAllister to close and vacate approximately 1,000 square feet of unimproved alley located between Harding Avenue and Allison Avenue near Georgia Avenue, lots one and two of block G, Lindbergh Heights. Ms. Tate.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Since we don't do right-of-way vacations too often, I thought I would just remind everyone of the procedures and kind of what step we're in in this process. So first, an applicant files an application with our office. And then at that point, the staff comes to you so that you can appoint citizen viewers as is required by the city charter. And then, once the viewers go out and provide their report back, we'll come back to you to schedule the public hearing for this application. So this is really just the very initial stages. No recommendation from staff yet. Just having the viewers be appointed kind of kicks off that process. So as was previously stated, this is a request to vacate the alley. It's directly behind property at 1508 Harding Avenue. A little hard to see here, but the property is outlined in red. And you can see the alley comes down behind here, and you can see that the improved portion stops there. And there's actually a guardrail here at this location. So this property owner has been maintaining this area and is interested in purchasing this. Our city code does require that, you know, half of it could go to the adjacent property owner. They have indicated that they are not interested, so the entire piece would be purchased by this property owner if approved by council. And this just shows you kind of down from the street looking up, you can see where the guardrail goes across there, and then this is that unimproved portion. So just requesting for viewers to be appointed so that we can begin this process, and then a staff report would come to you at a later time.
All right. Are there any questions for Ms. Tate before we move forward? Okay. Are there nominations for three viewers and an alternate?
Yep. Mayor, I recommend Dot Sayer, Andy Cruz, Chris Kaster as the principal viewers, and Ms. Doris Holby as our alternate.
Okay, and thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and thank you for that motion, Mr. Shorts. We have appointed our viewers. Okay. Item seven is to consider introducing an ordinance granting a conditional use permit upon application by Mildred Schofield Hoy to allow manufactured home in the MXB mixed business at 618 North Baird Avenue, tax map number 37-1-3, lots 16 and 17. Ms. Tate.
So this is a conditional use permit request to allow for a manufactured home at 618 North Baird Avenue. Just kind of a reminder of conditional use permits and kind of the parameters within the code. Conditional use permits allow for a case-by-case review of uses, which may be, but are not always compatible with neighboring uses. So in order to approve, council must find that the proposed use is consistent with good zoning practice. It's no more adverse to health, safety, or comfort of persons living or working in the area than use is generally permitted in the district, and then no more detrimental economically or otherwise to property or improvements in the surrounding area than the uses that are generally permitted by right within the district. So the request is to place a manufactured home in the mixed business district at 618 North Baird Avenue. So it's two properties there that are outlined in blue, and the parcel is currently vacant. This is just a street view picture of the property, so the home would be placed in this general vicinity. So the subject property is zoned mixed business, which is a mixed zoning designation district that allows for a mix of business and residential uses. And in that zoning district, manufactured homes are permitted, but only with a conditional use permit. Residential development in non-residential districts must abide by our RG5 or our general residential dimensional standards, which does require that the lot be at least 5,000 square foot for the CUP request. And this property does meet that at a little over 6,200 square feet. This map shows the zoning within the area, so any of the parcels that are this brown color are the mixed business zoning district. And then you can see there's a lot also of RG5, which is kind of our most flexible residential zoning district also within the vicinity. So what are our zoning requirements for manufactured homes? It does require that they be on a full foundation or completely skirted with materials that are approved by our building official. They must be set up and tied down in accordance with the standards that are laid out in the statewide building code, and then wheels, axles, tongue, towing apparatus, transporting lights, if any need to be removed prior to the final installation of the unit. Some additional requirements for manufactured homes and really all dwellings is related to kind of the orientation of the unit. So the front yard is measured from the front property line to the closest point of the building or structure. So in this case, if I go back to this picture, obviously, this would be the front as it is in this house here. And then you see D, this provision here. All homes and duplexes must have a primary facade and entrance that's parallel to the street from which the front setback is marked. So in this case, you know, oftentimes, or with some manufactured homes, the entrance is on kind of the longer side. In this case, it would have to be on that narrower end so that it could meet the setbacks and have that primary entrance facade facing the street. So the comprehensive plan designation for this area is mixed-use D. And the verbiage around that land use designation is that mixed-use D is located in the eastern portion of Waynesboro. Mixed-use development here would flank Commerce Avenue, and the corridor is suitable for commercial uses and various housing types. To revitalize Commerce Avenue, the plan calls for a mixed-use development. Proposed uses could include public parks, restaurants, convenience, retail, and a variety of housing options. This is the comprehensive plan map. So you can see that this brown color represents that mixed-use area D, which the comp plan identifies as a prime area for revitalization and a mix of both business, public, institution, and housing variety. And then you can see there's also medium-density residential in the vicinity on the future land use map. So staff has indicated within the staff report that, and just for everybody's awareness, a manufactured home is anything that falls within the HUD guidelines and was constructed after 1976. So there's kind of a wide range of manufactured housing. New that's constructed today, but also older manufactured housing that was constructed after 76. This particular applicant is interested in renting out the manufactured home and does not have a unit picked out at this time. So staff kind of determined that it's hard to tell if it fits within the character of the neighborhood or the area without really knowing kind of the age of the existing home. So if approved, staff would recommend these following conditions. Most are within the ordinance, but that the applicant would need to construct a primary entrance on the narrow facade if they were trying to retrofit an existing unit. Building permits would be required for any decks, utilities, and for the placement of the home. The relocation of the building would comply with the Virginia Construction Code. The relocated building would be subject to the Property Maintenance Code. All applicable building code requirements would be addressed before a CO was to be issued. And then number six are those things that I ran through earlier in the presentation related to skirting and kind of removing any kind of transporting items on the unit. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. The planning commission did recommend approval of the request.
Any questions?
So is she looking to bring these manufactured homes? Is she in the Southwind Trailer Park in Charlottesville?
I'm not exactly sure of the specific names. The applicant did mention that there is a park closing in Charlottesville, and that she may be interested in purchasing a home from there, but has not picked one out yet or hasn't decided on one yet.
Is she looking at multiple or just the one?
Well, this request is only for one, and only one could be placed on this particular property.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I think it's, if you go back to the, I think one of the first slides that you had about the context in which we would consider a conditional use is no more detrimental economically or otherwise to property or improvements in the surrounding area. It's very difficult to do that with not knowing if it's a 1986 unit or a 2024 unit. So I think for that reason, I'm not going to be in favor of that.
Okay.
I would actually be more in favor of even tabling it until she has a unit picked out and is asking for a specific, specific mobile home. That way we have more information and more details on the condition. Because it's, like you said, economically or not more detrimental economically or otherwise, we have those neighbors' properties to consider as well.
Okay, so you have a motion to table?
What, is the applicant here this evening, or?
I do not think that the applicant is here. We have planned to get the public hearing would be at your next meeting, so we do need to hold the public hearing on the request.
So how about if a motion to recommend advancement of the application to the next meeting, so that could afford the applicant the opportunity to, one, sort of reconcile some of these items that we brought to your attention, and then, second of all, afford the public an opportunity to provide comment, and then lastly, to get some guidance and opinion from the applicant as to whether or not they would like us to vote on it or to table.
Okay, so I have a motion to move the application to public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Allen. This ordinance will be subject to a public hearing at the August 26th meeting. Okay, thank you. Item eight is to consider introducing an ordinance relocating the Ward C Polling Precinct from 937 First Street, which is the Pre-K Center, to 1625 Ivy Street, which is Kate Collins Middle School. And I would like to call on Ms. Jeffers.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. I am the Director of Elections, Lisa Jeffers, for the City of Waynesboro. We're coming to you tonight to move Ward C Polling Place from the Kate, I mean, the Wayne Hills Preschool to Kate Collins, simply because of egress and ingress. The area that, and they have been very good partners with us over the years using that as the Ward C Polling Place. The parking area, as you enter, can be two ways. A lot of people miss that there is a curbside parking area, and they drive right through it. So do political parties when they're campaigning. And Ward C is now well over 4,000 registered voters and continues to grow, as well as, you know, with the housing. And that's why the board really would like for you all to move it. It makes more sense. We also used Kate Collins in 2020 and held the May and the June. We held all four precincts there, and it worked really well. And I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions? You'll make plenty of advertisement.
Absolutely. Every registered voter will also get a voter card once you do pass this. And my staff, which is me and one part-timer, will work diligently to get them out before, it has to be mailed out 30 days in advance.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So is there a motion to introduce the ordinance to move?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, this ordinance will be subject to a public hearing and receive final consideration at the August 26th meeting. Thank you so much, Ms. Jeffers. Item nine is to consider introducing an ordinance to rezone a property at 1390 and 1400 and Zero Duke Road, tax map numbers 16-1-A, 16-1-B, 16-1-C, 16-1-D, and 15-1-E from RS12 Single Family Residential Large Lot to PUD, which is a planned unit development. Applicant Stockbridge Up Company LLC agent for the Sherry Smith Revocable Trust Owner. I will call on Ms. Tate.
Okay, so this is a rezoning of what we refer to as the Smith Farm from RS12, which is our low-density, single-family residential district, to a planned unit development, which really just allows for kind of an upfront review by staff and approval by council, so that you really know what type of development you're getting, number of units, different amenities, things like that. So this property is located on the northern end, north of Hopeman Parkway, kind of right up there as you transition into Augusta County from the city limits. It is 147 acres, and most of you are aware that it's home to the former Augusta County District Home. So the property was intended to be a gift to the city for use as a park for passive recreation and conservation land. The comprehensive plan in 2008 identifies the land use map as low-density residential and also shows a location for a future public park. 147 acres is a significant size, and so city had some concerns about kind of long-term maintenance and ownership of a property of that size, and then also the liability of the old district home. Some additional background is that the stream on the property underwent restoration work in 2022 and 2023, and has a conservation easement placed on it. So in 2023, the city entered into a memorandum of understanding to kind of examine the potential development of the property, recognizing that it did have access to utilities and what may be kind of the best use for the property. That memorandum of understanding identified that there would be the provision of parkland, that the applicant or developer would be responsible for the removal of the district home building, and that there would also be some kind of equal or relatively equal conservation of property elsewhere in the city. So city staff has been working with the applicant since the fall of 2023 on their code of development for this property. And the code of development is required as part of a planned unit development, and essentially, it's the zoning documents and the zoning designation for that particular property. So they write really kind of their own zoning designation, obviously referencing our zoning ordinance when necessary, but it helps provide a little bit more flexibility and kind of clustering of units to preserve open space. So the applicants are requesting to rezone from RS12 Low Density Residential to our planned unit development. So just to speak a little bit about the current zoning on the property. It is single-family large lot, which permits single-family detached residential development on 12,000-square-foot lots. It also allows for a cluster development option, which is roughly three and a half units per acre. With the cluster option, there is a requirement to have land set aside as open space. For the proposed zoning, it is a planned unit development, and as I previously mentioned, does require a code of development be approved. And this is the zoning map for the property. So this light yellow color is RS12, the large lot, single-family large lot residential. And then this brown color is zoned multifamily. And there is a townhouse development happening on this property that has been approved. So the zoning ordinance requires a PUD to have a code of development, and the code of development must include kind of an introduction to the project, a concept plan that lays out the lots and the streets and the public spaces. The code of development has to identify what the permitted uses are, the area and dimensional standards relating to lots. It also has to detail common areas and amenities and include design guidelines. So this specific code of development identifies that the entire property, the 147 acres, would be developed in four phases and include a mix of residential types and densities. The overall maximum density on the project is 400 units, which is roughly 2.75 units per acre. The code of development includes the dedication of 60 acres of public parkland that the city would kind of keep in as a passive park. The applicant would also construct 0.75 miles of greenway through the property. And then also, there is connectivity among the different phases and to adjoining properties. So this map, kind of in these different colors, shows these different phases of the property. So the blue area is the Westfield Development Area. The green is representative of the 60 acres of public parkland and the conservation easement that runs along the stream. The red is the Hopeman Ridge Development Area. Then in yellow, you have the Duke Road Development Area. And then also off of Duke Road is the Streamside Development Area. In this concept plan, you can see kind of the general layout of the lots, the road connection. So there is a road connection between this Hopeman Ridge area and the Westfield Development Area down here. And there would also be a connection to the existing Ivy Commons Development. These numbers are representative of various different amenities. So there's a greenway trailhead. The red throughout is representative of greenway and other trails. They propose a picnic area, some smaller kind of pocket parks throughout, a playground area, community garden, and then all of the community trails. So just starting here at the Hopeman Ridge Development Area, identified as Phase One, that's roughly 25 acres. The zoning documents would allow for a maximum of 180 dwelling units within that area. The mix of unit types that are permitted would be single-family detached, attached, duplexes, corner lot duplexes, multiplexes, and townhouses. And that complements the density of adjacent properties to the south that I mentioned. I think that's called the Summit Towns Development. And there would be two connections, or I guess one connection here to that development. Next, the Streamside Development Area, so it's 10 acres. The zoning documents are proposing a maximum of up to 50 dwellings. It has the same unit types that are permitted in the other development area, but they also include manufactured home subdivision within the Streamside area. And this phase would be accessed from Duke Road near its intersection with Sherwood Avenue. The next is the Westfield Development Area. It's 35 acres, would be a maximum of up to 150 dwelling units, and allows for both detached, attached duplexes, corner lot duplexes, townhouses, and then accessory dwelling units. It complements kind of the single-family development that's to the west with Ivy Commons. And it would be accessed through Ivy Commons and Hopeman Ridge, which would then go back out to Hopeman would be that access point. And then lastly is the Duke Road Development Area, which is 28 acres. It's, this area is kind of proposed as the transition into the county. It would be larger lots, single-family detached homes up to a maximum of 20. And as mentioned, it would complement kind of the existing rural residential along Duke Road that is in the county on the other side of Duke Road. And it would be accessed by individual and some shared driveways along Duke Road. So the consistency with the comp plan, the comprehensive plan designates the property as low-density residential, which is envisioned to be three to four units per acre. So although this is clustered and higher density in some of the clusters, the overall density falls within the designation of the comprehensive plan. It shows the general area as a location for a future public park, and that is included with the dedication of 60 acres of public parkland. And the comprehensive plan also shows a section of greenway that traverses the Smith Farm property that becomes a part of the city's overall greenway plan. The code of development proposes 400 units, which is roughly 2.75 units per acre. Although not an exact science, but if it was developed by right, potentially using the cluster option under the existing zoning, again, not taking into account infrastructure, so this number would certainly be lower, but it would be close to or over the 400 units that are being proposed. So staff notes that the proposed rezoning does come- So staff notes that the proposed rezoning does comply with the comprehensive plan, and this shows the property is here. This kind of asterisk represents the indication of a public park within the area, and the green dots are representative of the future land use map showing the greenway trail through the property. And then this kind of light green color is representative of the low density residential zoning with the orange representative of the high density residential. And so this this property is kind of acting as like a transition between the higher density out to the lower density area. So it is zoned for low density residential development, and the code of development clusters the development to kind of avoid negative impacts on the existing natural features. So it's preserving natural features. There is public water and sewer on, already on or nearby that can serve the development, and it will lead to the demolition and removal of the old district home building. Another analysis point within our code for planned unit developments is the environmental impacts. And this code does propose to protect existing natural features in several ways. So the existing conservation easement on the stream and wetland area, the dedication of sixty acres of public parkland, the clustering of development to avoid sensitive areas. There's also an existing cemetery on the property that will be preserved and protected. It would be maintained by the HOA and accessible by the community trails. For public infrastructure serving the development, the connectivity, as previously mentioned, that Hopeman Ridge and the Westfield Development Area will be directly connected, and then there will be connections provided to Summit Towns to the south and Ivy Commons to the west. The Duke Road Development Area would be accessed from individual or shared driveways, and then the Streamside Development Area would have a single entrance onto Duke Road near the intersection with Sherwood Avenue, and then future inter parcel connections are possible to the south and west if those properties were to ever develop. And you can see those here and down here. So a full blown traffic impact analysis is not required with the specific application, but the applicant did complete a turn lane warrant analysis for the Hopeman Ridge Development Area. And I will go to that to kind of show what some of the improvements would be related to that turn lane warrant analysis. So for the Hopeman Ridge Development Area, left turn lanes would be triggered and a hundred foot of storage and a hundred foot of taper. For the Westfield Development Area, the right turn tapers are triggered on a hundred foot taper. And then there were no improvements warranted kind of for that lower density in the Streamside and the Duke Road Development Areas. VDOT did review the study and agrees with the results of the analysis. There's also a provision within the code of development that traffic would be examined again at each phase of the development, and that really allows for kind of age and other things that might occur prior to the development being completed. So public water and sewer infrastructure, there is a public sewer line that runs through the property. For water, there's a public water line running through the eastern side of the property near Duke Road, and then there are additional water access connections to the adjacent development occurring within the area. Evaluations to determine adequacy of the system and any necessary upgrades would be the responsibility of the developer, and they're completed at the preliminary plat and public improvement plan stage. This is a little difficult to see, but this green line is representative of the sewer line that runs through the property. So for school capacity, this property is located in the William Perry Elementary School District, and I won't read all those, but you can see as of March twenty twenty-four, those enrollment numbers and represent that the schools do have capacity. For parks and recreation, twenty percent of common area is required for a PUD. So they're required to have twenty-eight acres, and then of that, sixty percent must be contiguous. So that is seventeen acres and twenty-five percent must be improved in some way, like trails or playgrounds. So to meet that requirement, this code of development is proposing a mix of improvements, a playground tot lot, picnic areas, community gardens, kind of mini parks and pocket parks, greens, community trails, and the greenway trail for a total of eight point four eight acres, which is over the minimum seven acre requirement, and then again, sixty acres of dedicated public parklands. The dedication of the public parkland would occur after the completion of the Hopeman Ridge Development Area, but prior to the issuance of the final CO for the Streamside or Westfield Development Areas, whichever is built out first. Again, noted, it would be used more for passive recreation, similar to Corner Springs. Parks and Rec Department doesn't have any concerns about the long term maintenance. It would be more kind of mowing or bush hogging the property as they do with Corner Springs, but it wouldn't be kind of a more intense type of park development. And then staff notes that this does provide a significant benefit to the area with a lot of new and planned subdivisions that are within the vicinity. They would all be connected to this public park via complete sidewalk and greenway trails. The comprehensive plan notes that a priority quality of life project for the city would be to design and plan for a citywide circumferential trail system, enabling every resident to be a short walk from a trailhead. And this three quarters of a mile would certainly do that with a lot of development, residential development that's occurring within the area. So the PUD, the code of development does provide for a lot of different housing types within those four development areas. It does protect natural features and provides for necessary road connectivity and also an extensive community trail system. The, our code addresses that PUDs need to adequately address any historic structures or resources, and staff just notes that the district home building is extremely deteriorated, does cause concerns about liability and safety, and that the code of development does contain a voluntary proffer that the building would be demolished and removed by January first of two thousand twenty-six. And then already, as already mentioned, the cemetery will be conserved and protected. The code of development promotes the creation and preservation of a range of housing units, and price points would likely vary according to those varying housing types. And then lastly, staff notes that the applicant has submitted, in addition to the code of development, proffers on the property, and I won't read these in detail, but first, obviously, is that the property is going to be developed in accordance with the plans and the code of development. The second is related to the dedication of the sixty acres of public parkland, and the third relates to the developer's responsibility for removal of the district home. The Planning Commission held a public hearing and does recommend approval of the request. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Leslie. I actually have a question, and I'd like to also thank you for adding the school enrollment numbers. I think I get asked about that with every new development. It's probably one of the number one questions that people ask, and they have concerns about. So thank you so much. Concerning the Streamside Development in Phase Two, the section about manufactured homes, could you please define the difference for me, the difference between a manufactured home and a modular home?
Yes. So manufactured homes, I guess, kind of back to the previous presentation I gave tonight, are HUD certified housing, and they are, you know, it covers a really wide range. So it's anything that was, has a HUD label on it from nineteen seventy-six. Before nineteen seventy-six, they're often referred to as a mobile home or a trailer. And then post nineteen seventy-six, the HUD guidelines were put in place, and anything from that to what is constructed today is a manufactured home. Often comes, you know, the chassis that it arrives on is part of the unit. Modular is different in that, and we don't regulate modular any differently than a stick built home. So that that's kind of how I would describe those differences. Typically modular might be constructed or pieces of it constructed, and then brought to the site and assembled.
When I think of manufactured, I think of single wide or double wide. That used to be the definition. Thank you for that. Any other questions?
I think in just the context of, I think there are several communities that are sort of responding to, Mr. Wood mentioned, the Charlottesville facility and folks seeking placement. And it's concerning to continue with an option. It sounds like a really remarkable, and I appreciate staffs and, you know, Aaron and all of the work that y'all put into to it. It seems like this is a distraction from, and the sort of risks that are associated with the potential for the site to be partitioned off in nineteen eighty units. Manufactured housing trailers be delivered on site, I think is concerning. I think is a distraction to the overall quality of the development. So I also have some reservations and consternation about that term. And so that and look forward to, you know, I'd imagine the, we will hear from the community with that regard too. So I think if there was any additional conversation to be had, that would be appreciated.
I just want to echo that, the comments. I mean, we've been back and forth, and we've discussed this. There's been a lot of planning involved and a lot of people's part. It's going to bring, bring a lot to our city, but the manufactured home part of it is what really kind of sticks with me as much as anything. If that was changed to a modular plan instead of a manufactured plan, I think we would have a better outlook on it than the manufactured part. So if that is open for discussion, then maybe we should continue that discussion as we get closer.
Because I'm really excited about the possibility of this being the, the sort of pilot of the cottage housing concept that we've been exploring, and where it gets to that affordability, you get that sort of density mark, while also really being a test case and hopefully approving ground for how that type of construction would be a valuable contribution in diversifying our housing stock. So.
Are there any other? So we have the option to introduce tonight?
I'll move to advance the application to a public hearing and council's consideration at our August twenty-sixth meeting.
Okay. So have a motion to introduce. Do I have a second? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Okay, this motion was introduced, and we will be subject to a public hearing at the August twenty-sixth meeting. If the applicant was here, I probably should have offered you the option to speak.
Yeah.
Would you care to address council with some of the concerns that we addressed tonight?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if that was appropriate.
That's absolutely appropriate. I should have offered. I apologize.
Yeah, good to see you, Aaron Revere. Nice to see you, and I appreciate y'all's time and consideration. I think the main thing was, and as staff kind of indicated, might be, was the manufactured home piece. And I will say, we went, spent a lot of time with staff on this. And part of it, and Ms. Short, you kind of alluded to it, there's, there's a lot of decades that have gone by since seventy-six, and there are some manufactured homes that are actually more like cottages now and don't look like the double and single wide. And so we've been trying to maintain that flexibility, that something's actually a little bit more like a cottage or a cabin than perhaps even a modular home that comes up in two pieces. It's on a trailer and stuff. So we've been trying to just understand that flexibility, particularly with discussions we've had on affordable housing, to do that in the community. As y'all are thinking about a pilot program for that as well, we've been engaged a bit with staff on that, as well as the accessory dwelling units here. So we've just been trying to maintain flexibility. What I can say that would be really easy for us to do is, is take that definition and modernize it, and that is nothing older than, call it, two twenty twenty. So, I mean, we had no idea what was going on really in Charlottesville and stuff, and I don't think that's our intent, is to bring in used product, but we understand your concerns. And but to give you a perspective of where we're coming from, it's trying to just be respectful and responsive to maybe some of that, call it the tiny home movement in the cottages and that kind of thing, because it not only goes along with the building, but it also even goes along with how units front roads and the roadway in your park, and you can walk to your house instead of parking right in front of your house. We've been exploring a lot of that in towns where Winchester was looking at that and other things. But otherwise, yeah, we really appreciate it, and staff's been fantastic to work with. And we're more than happy to talk more about that and answer all the questions that you and others may have in a couple of weeks. We look forward to that. But anything else that you have now?
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I would just offer, Aaron, thank you for that. It sounds like you've got some specific things in mind, some, and contemplated in terms of what these structures might look like and how they might be delivered to the site and be used. I think in the same way that the PUD and how council and the community would sort of respond to that, and the council would consider the proposal, now you've, you've done, you know, again, a great job working with staff to identify prescriptive elements, right? So that the project would be delivered in general conformity to the concept that you've outlined. And so that's a great step because it really tells us what you're not going to do.
Yes.
Right? And so I think if there was any additional flexibility or consideration that you might give of being explicit in the way you have this evening, to be explicit of what you aren't contemplating.
Yeah, we'll give.
That would be really helpful.
To clarify that.
Yeah.
We've kind of run that down because from our standpoint, the questions we had are, when it actually comes down to the purchasing and someone getting a mortgage, I mean, you got to get it off that trailer, and it goes from a titling like a vehicle to a deed like a house. And so this process is to kind of go through that. So we've been trying to dig into how do you, how do you do that, whether that's, you know, a house that just looks like a little cabin in the woods versus, you know, what we all pictured before, but trying to make it come. But we can try and clarify. To your point, we can try and put more color and specificity to what we're thinking, or just find some way to, we don't want to get hung up on the intent and purpose on.
Right, and it's one of those things too, and we've had occasions too with other PUDs where their other applicants in the past have had to go and say, well, I really haven't had the exact answer yet. So they just remove that element from it, and then it's time sort of face itself. That's one of the last, you know, parcels to be delivered as part of the overall development project. So to come back and say, we've kind of figured it out. Here's, here's what it is, and to do a simple amendment to the PUD at that point.
And that may be where we end up.
Yeah, so great. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just want to ask one other question.
Yes, sir.
On the manufactured, I definitely prefer the modular over the manufactured, that term. I'm just going to tell you that now.
Fair enough.
And granted, after a house fire when I was fourteen, I spent the rest of my home life in a double wide. So I'm not trying to poke at anything in particular, but I do know that the manufactured homes tend to weather faster than a stick built house does. Does the, will the HOA govern over the, if you go through with the manufacturer, would the HOA govern over that and keep it to a certain standard?
Yes, that's the intent, is to function like a normal HOA with their design standards and approval and those kind of things. And all that is within the standards in terms of like, you know, the setbacks and driveways and that stuff. So yeah, nothing unusual there.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So item ten is to consider adopting the two thousand twenty-four CDBG Annual Action Plan and Five Year Consolidated Plan. I'm going to call on Leslie again. We're going to keep her busy tonight.
So I will be really brief with this one because we have covered it a lot now. But so the city has worked on updating its five year consolidated plan for community development block grant entitlement funds. So we have been working with a consultant and doing a great deal of community outreach to update that plan as is required by HUD. So this is our two thousand twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight five year consolidated plan that we're asking for you to adopt this evening. And in addition to that plan, we are asking for you to adopt the two thousand twenty-four Annual Action Plan that identifies what program activities we would be using the two thousand twenty-four entitlement allocation for. So just a very broad brush about CDBG projects using community development block grant funds must meet one of three national objectives, and typically, and at least seventy percent of the grant amount needs to benefit low to moderate income persons. A consolidated plan, the five year plan, is kind of the overview of what your CDBG program will look like in the next five years. And so with that community outreach, you develop what your goals are going to be. And so then every year, as you're programming activities, they should meet these goals. So the consolidated plan goals identified in this consolidated plan are to improve access to and quality of housing, to provide public services, improve public facilities and infrastructure, and then planning and administration. For two thousand twenty-four, the funds available to. For 2024, the funds available to the city is $167,321. And this chart identifies what activities would be undertaken. So a little over $92,000 would be provided for land acquisition. So we, there are two apartment projects within the city that have been awarded low-income housing tax credits through the state. And so we would be proposing to split this amount in half and give half to the one that's proposed on Alston Court and half to the other project. And then if one was to fall through, we would give it all to to one for land acquisition. And that really helps those projects kind of move forward on time because they're pulling from funding and really unique financing in a lot of different areas. $50,000 of the grant would be for critical home repair. We would enter into a subrecipient agreement with Renewing Homes of Greater Augusta, which already does this type of work. And with the $50,000, they estimate being able to help roughly five individuals or five households with necessary repairs. And again, they would run that program and certainly have to ensure and and demonstrate that the individuals helped meet the low-to-moderate-income guidelines for HUD. $10,000 would go to LifeWorks for a rent and utility assistance program. A little over $10,000 would go to WARM for case management activities related to the services they provide to homeless families. And then $5,000 would be allocated to HERO, which, like LifeWorks, would be doing kind of a rent and utility relief program. So this 10, the two kind of $10,000 amounts and the $5,000 amount are representative of what is referred to in CDVG entitlement as public services. And you're limited, you're kind of capped at what you can provide in public services. So this represents the full amount of that cap. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. We did have the consolidated plan and the annual action plan open for a 30-day public comment period. We did not receive any comments. So we are asking for council to adopt the plan this evening. And then we will follow up directly this week to submit to HUD. And our program year would start in October.
Are there any questions for Leslie? Okay, so is there a motion to approve the 2024 Annual Action Plan and Five-Year Consolidated Plan? Okay, everyone at once. I will go with Mr. Wood. Thank you for that. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that plan passes four to zero. Thank you so much, Leslie. You can rest now. Item 11, and we're going to pick on Mr. Wood now. Item 11 is communication, correspondence, and calendar. Mr. Wood?
Do you have not have anything this evening?
Uh huh, sure.
That's too much.
Okay, item 12 is citizen comment period.
We do have one speaker, Cheryl Helsel.
Okay. If you could just please state your name and address for our records, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, Sherry Helsel, 115 Summer Crest Avenue in Waynesboro. And I've contacted all of you last week because of my recent encounter with trying to obtain my dog license last week. And so I'm just here to speak again about my concerns regarding the enforcement of animal laws and ordinances in general. Animal control officers and law enforcement officers, those are the ones with the authority to enforce, not treasurers and not animal shelters. Officers, even the officers are required to enforce using due process, a ticket, or a summons, either civil or criminal. We know that they can't even impose direct punishment or penalty, right? We've been down that road. There's a legal process where a person can assume liability if he so chooses after getting a civil summons. And we know that officers can't seizure impound animals under specific provisions of law. They can't extend impoundment or preclude the reclaiming of animals as a tool to reduce the burden of their enforcement activities. So, you know, anyway, the two scenarios that concern me is that Waynesboro is still using the animal shelter as an enforcement tool. A citizen must contact the Waynesboro PD before going to the shelter to reclaim an animal. And even though they're no longer skipping the ticket part, apparently, a citizen still must appear before them for receipt of that summons before the shelter releases their animals. And that's not right. It interferes with the animal shelter's duty under law to return an animal to its rightful owner. And then, you know, my recent experience, the treasurer has no enforcement authority. There's no enforcement authority for the treasurer for enforcing animal laws. They are just bound by law to collect money and issue receipts and metal tags. That's it. It literally states, you know, when any person at any time makes application to obtain a dog license, they're to collect the tax, issue the metal receipt, issue the tag, the receipt and the metal tag. They have no authority to investigate, adjudicate, or penalize. They have no authority to refuse any person a dog license unless there's no proof of rabies vaccination or residency. Those are the only reasons that they can preclude the licensing of a dog, whether it's a first time mid-year or even if it's a late application or if it's an application that's subsequent to a summons. Like, you have to be able to just go in and get your license. They need to collect the tax, issue the license. That's their role, and it's actually mandated with a show. So we're still using the treasurer as an enforcement tool. A citizen is denied a dog license if the treasurer's office staff suspects a violation and it's adjudicated for penalty right there at the counter. And this isn't okay. They don't they don't have any authority to do that. It interferes with the treasurer's actual duty under law to collect taxes and issue a license. And even the dog license application that they use reveals how confused they are about the animal laws and ordinances. You know, they're calling it a purchase and a sell and selling tags. You know, it's not a purchase. Nothing goes on sale. And it's not 30 days after the first vaccination. It's 30 days after the animal reaches four months of age or 30 days after acquiring an animal. I've given you all a copy of the application I filled out. And then your annual renewal before February 1st every year. So they really need to get out of the the legal stuff and get all of that out of their application. Just make it an application, not a legal summary, and get out of the enforcement side of it. And, you know, there's no change in ordinance that I'm requesting. I'm just requesting that we stop having the shelter or the treasurer involved in the enforcement process by this manipulation of withholding something. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Allen?
I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Yes, you do.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.